Alright folks, let's go ahead and get this thing going.
Lund.
Here.
Johnston.
Here.
Watts. Allen.
Here.
Jacobs.
Here. Approval of the minutes.
Move to approve. Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Epstein.
Allen.
Here.
Jacobs.
Yes. Alright, adoption of the agenda. Move to approve.
Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes. Alright. Now we're gonna have some fun here.
No, you are.
Yeah. I'll put my disclaimer out here, if I mispronounce one of these words, I am not a doctor.
Is Jennifer here?
Alright. Come on up. And if you've got some other people with you. Whoever you got, tell them to come on up. You got the good one there.
You have that too. Thank you.
Alright. I'm gonna give you the good one here. I made some notes on how to pronounce the word. It wasn't bad, once I looked at it, it's all okay. Alright, proclamation for dysom- see, I can't read. Proclamation for dysomia awareness month. Whereas, dysautonomia is a group of medical conditions that result in a malfunction of the atomic nervous system, which is responsible for automatic bodily functions such as respiration, heart rate, blood pressure, digestion, temperature control, and more. And whereas, some forms of dysautonomia are considered rare diseases such as multiple symptom autophagy or pure atomic failure, while other forms of dysautonomia are common impacting millions of people in the US and around the world such as diabetic atomic neuropathy, neurocardi- (coughs) neurocardi- there we go. Syncope, and osteral ortho- orthostatic.
Tachycardia.
Tachycardia syndrome. I promise, I did read this once before I came up here. Whereas, dysautonomia impacts people of any age, gender, race, or background, including many individuals living in Warrensburg, Missouri, and whereas, some forms of dysautonomia can result in death, causing tremendous pain and suffering for those impacted and their loved ones, and whereas, increased awareness about dysautonomia will help patients get diagnosed and treated earlier, save lives, and foster support for individuals and families coping with dysautonomia in our community. And whereas, Dysautonomia International, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization that advocates on behalf of patients living with dysautonomia, encourages communities to celebrate Dysautonomia Awareness Month each October around the world, and whereas, we seek to recognize the contributions of the professional medical community, patients, and family members who are working to educate our citizenry about dysautonomia in Warrensburg, Missouri. Now, therefore, be it resolved, I, Brian Jacobs, Mayor of the City Council, Mayor of the City, I'm just missing one there. Mayor of the City of Warrensburg Council, along with other members of the City Council, would like to recognize the contribution of the professional medical community, patients, and family members who are working to educate our citizenry about dysautonomia in Warrensburg, Missouri, dated this 9th October 2007.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. At any point in my life, if I would've said that word that many times, I probably would've said, "That'll never happen." Okay, public hearing. Alright. Of a public hearing on ordinance annexing certain adjacent territories into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, located on the east side of HH Highway, north of Highway 50 and south of Veterans Road. Anybody sign up back there to speak on that one? Anybody, public?
Well, he's looking at that, I'll make a few comments. In August, there were several tracts of land annexed between Cahill Subdivision and the Highway 13 right-of-way four tracks, and when we did that, there was a piece, a triangle piece, that was owned by the Baldridge LLC, and they had not made application yet, but we anticipated that coming forward, and so, one of the tracts went around that. This is the application for that small triangle piece of land, it's slightly, I think it's .26 acres, it's a small tract. I didn't bring in the giant map, but it's this little tiny corner triangle right, right in here on that exhibit, there's a copy in your packet. So, we have received the application and posted notice at the hearing this evening, and then, we've got it on the agenda for first reading, we'll then have a 14-day comment period. At this point in time, I've not received any comment.
And nobody signed up to speak? So, unless-
The council has anything to say, or?
Alright, we'll close that public hearing and move on to the next one. A public hearing on an ordinance annexing certain adjacent territories into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, known as right-of-way for Veterans Road between Enterprise Avenue and the Cahill subdivision.
Previously, a section of the Baldwin Farm was annexed into the city in roughly 2006, and that was to bring it connecting to the city, the Cahill subdivision, so that connecting property of the Baldwins, as well as the land that would become the Cahill subdivision, were all annexed into the city at the same time. That accomplished annexing in the south half of the future extension of Veterans Road from Enterprise Avenue over to the Cahill subdivision. The section line that runs through there is intended to run as much as design will allow down the center of the right-of-way. So, the north half of the right-of-way, and where it jogs a little bit to go over during each ditch, needs to be annexed into the city, and that is what this application that you have in front of you, this evening, is for basically the north half of the right-of-way of Veterans Road between Enterprise Avenue and the western half of Cahill, the western edge of Cahill subdivision. Gary and Lorraine Baldwin, and Roger and Connie Baldwin have donated, granted a permanent right-of-easement to the city for that, you acted on that a few weeks ago, and so, this will bring it into the city of Warrensburg. Again, we've published notice, I've not heard any, had any comments, or pursued any comments at this point in time, but we would do the first reading this evening, and then have that 14-day comment period before your next meeting. Do you have any answering questions?
Let's see, we had nobody sign up for public speaking? Alright, so that'll close the public hearing portion of our meeting tonight, and then we'll move on to the first reading only ordinance. Let's see here, an ordinance annexing certain adjacent territory into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, located on the east side of HH Highway, north of Highway 50, and south of Veterans Road. And then the next one is, an ordinance annexing certain adjacent territory into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, known as right-of-way for Veterans Road between Enterprise Avenue and Cahill subdivision. Let's see here, now our first and second reading ordinances. We'll start off with, an ordinance renaming the Diversity and Inclusion Task Force and amending Chapter 12 of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Warrensburg, Missouri.
How you doing? I'm great, how are you guys? So, it's been a long and windy road, but we're finally ready to actually name ourselves something official. Had a great meeting the other night, and would like to propose that we go drastically different and call ourselves the Diversity and Inclusion Commission. That is the primary change that we're asking for here. We are, we did discuss the number of folks on the commission, and will be also requesting or suggesting that that change from nine to seven, as the number of voting members. I think that perhaps in the copy you got, the words "Task Force" still show up in the description, but it would simply be the Diversity and Inclusion Commission. The basic purposes would not change. We do want to discuss, and I don't know if I got the draft minutes to Matthew in time or not, but one of the things we did discuss at the very end of our last meeting was whether or not we wanted to update, that we did want to update the language regarding who we broadly represent. Right now, there's basically three really specific segments of the population, and we went back and forth about whether or not we wanted to try and name every possible segment of the population, and landed on that we really want it to be a broad description, that we want to make sure that we're broadly inclusive without having to be held to necessarily make sure that always, at all times, there are certain specific representatives. And so, that's language we're gonna go back and craft at our next meeting, about how we'd like that to be, that's in Section 1227. We also talked briefly about terms, because we know we need to update that section as well, to make sure that we're staggered in our terms. So, the overall purpose of the commission has not changed, we're not suggesting any change to that, we do want to just update the language in Section 1227 related to that. We've been having some really great conversations. Amber Clifford Napoleon, who is a relatively new member, has been doing some great research related to other communities and some ordinances, some possible changes we might suggest to ordinances that relate to discrimination. We've not had an in-depth conversation about that, because she's not been able to be there recently, but that is one of the next things we're gonna be talking about. Happy to answer any questions.
The reason why commission instead of task force?
The task force was the kind of short-term version for us to figure out, alright, what do we need to do, what do we, what's our focus, how many of us should there be? So, as I understand it, sort of the task force is done, and we need to now establish ourselves as a permanent something, and we chose board, we chose commission rather than board, just because we are not gonna be making any decisions, we won't be making any final calls on anything, our job is to gather that information and make recommendations. Plus, I, you know, I like that it'd be a commissioner, I can get a little badge, maybe. But, so that was really, that was really the depth of the conversation there, so. One of the questions I did have is, so if you're okay with the name change and the number change, that's great, does it work to make those changes and then let us go back and update the language about the broadly inclusive nature and the terms, does that work for us to come back then and make those recommendations as well? Would you rather do it all at once? I don't think it matters to us.
I would probably prefer to keep it as general as possible. One, trying to name all the different entities now, and let any potential future entity maybe, would be difficult, so by keeping it generic, I think that gives them the flexibility and the adaptability that you would want in a list commission for the future.
Making all your changes-
Well, that was really what I was-
If making all your changes in one ordinance as opposed to two will decrease the risk that something gets codified.
Right, so it would be the same ordinance that would be requesting some update to, I just didn't know if you would prefer to do these changes now?
I like that.
Or let us come back with that, or do them all at once?
Yeah, let's go ahead and, I guess, table this, and then we'll, when you have it all ready to go, we'll just approve it all on one big order.
Sounds good, sounds good.
And I think this might be a part, Carol and I had a conversation, because my life has changed a little bit now, and I can't make every single one, and I've missed two, so I still really do want to stay on with the Diversity Commission, but I wondered if there could be like a second person I could call, maybe Mayor, not you, maybe somebody else, that if I can't make that meeting, maybe one of the other four of us would go to that one, you know what I mean? Because I think things are gonna change in my life here in a few months, I won't be so tied down, but right now, it's hard for me, and I did talk to Suzie about maybe bringing this other little person of mine that I adopted. But, anyway, I just thought we'd think about that if we could too, when we get ready to do all this, maybe a secondary lead on for the council if they could. And I'm sorry I missed the last couple, but I've been reading minutes and-
No, that's great, and I, we've really appreciated you being there, we really have, and appreciate, we want to keep, obviously, we're, we're, we're an entity of yours, so we definitely want to keep that connection.
I don't think that's an issue, having somebody that can jump in.
Well, they'd probably know at least a week or two ahead of time, I just know there's a, you know, I don't know if you guys are gonna go in December or November, because the holidays coming up.
I think we will, because we meet first Monday, at 7:00 PM, and we are now at the Community Center in the meeting room, so just FYI, open public meeting, please come, first Monday at 7:00 PM. One of the other things we talked about related to making sure that the language is broad, is that we also don't want to let any groups go unrepresented, and so, we are gonna be counting on the council, but also the community, to keep this group accountable as we move on. I think we've got a really strong group right now, but, you know, as folks roll off, we just want to make sure that, that there's lots of communication and transparency about who's on the commission, the fact that it's always an open public meeting, and that we want to have as much, as many voices there as possible, so that's why we, we talked about the seven voting members, but four advisory members, to make sure that, that we get as much input and feedback from as many different voices as possible.
And you're sending that out to, when you set those meetings up, you're sending that out to UCM, so they-
The minutes?
No, not the minutes, but as far as the meeting agenda?
I don't think I have done that, I need to do that, that's an excellent point. I'll also rely on our press to make sure that gets out there. But, yeah, good point, thank you, I'll do that.
Well, and it's nice to have the minutes in the packet too, I didn't really see if they were in from the last meeting, and I was here, I asked her to do that, to let the council, all of them, read it.
Great.
If it somehow could hit the packet.
Yeah, we have the draft minutes from just this past meeting available too, so. Thank you, I appreciate your support.
Alright, thank you. Alright, we have an ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute a contract with civic organizations for fiscal year 18 annual services.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, would you have any packet of contracts for the community organizations that receive funding from the city? All these entities request to level funding, and staff is comfortable with the regular budget, and we recommend the approval of ordinance and contracts. Do you have any questions about any of the contracts or in the ordinance?
Move to pass that ordinance to second reading by title?
Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
This is an ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute contracts with civil organizations for fiscal year 18 annual services. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
An ordinance amending ordinance 5271 concerning the adopted fiscal year 17 annual budget for the community investment program.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, this budget amendment thanks to the failure of Culver on Monterey Park Road, I believe in August, the 2nd, and it was deemed that it was an emergency, and so, staff took action on that. We had $30,000 budgeted for emergency water and storm repairs, so this repair actually went above that, and the actual amount was $49,398.50, so we would need a budget amendment of $19,398.50 to cover the over, just what I passed out to you a little earlier, were pictures of Culver and the invoices, and it was, staff recommended approval of the ordinance. Do you have any questions?
Taking that money, you just got moved out with general fund?
No, that'd be money for the CIP.
Oh, okay, so inside the CIP, we had the $30,000?
Yes, we had $30,000 budgeted, we budgeted that every year, just for things like this, it's time we just wanted a little, little above that amount.
Was it the time of year, or what was the reason that it was, it was just a really bad break? If you get really into it, I probably won't understand.
You know, we got a sub box power, it's pouring rain. It had totally rusted, bottom had rusted out, and started inflating on our amount of rain, we've had probably contributed to it, but, you know, it's gotten that condition over a number of years, we've got a few of those in the community that are like that. This would just have to be in a major spring year and down, so.
Is $30,000 something we need to reevaluate in the future, as maybe not being enough?
Well, we've done our stormwater master plan, we're trying to determine what we've got in dollar amounts of repairs that we've made. I believe the next council meeting, still planning on having the engineers come and make a presentation on the stormwater master plan, so that we can finalize that for this next year, so, at that time, we'll know what we need to be putting towards the stormwater project.
Ultimately, along the lines, as we talked about before, about we're getting a remit from our paper stormwater specifically, and so, at some point, we're probably gonna be looking at a stormwater utility. And actually, last week, I had a conversation with Representative Dan Hauks and his staff, and he happened to ask what we need help with, and I happened to mention this issue, that under state legislation, anything that we enacted in the city is considered a tax, and therefore, has to go on the ballot, and ask that the state legislature look at redefining that as a utility, so that we contribute the same as we do sanitary sewer and those types of things. So, there is an open public process for that, but it doesn't have to go on the ballot, one to, well, it's not about to create it, but anytime you need to do any type of rate change or anything like that, it doesn't have to go back on the ballot, there's other public processes in place to do that, but right now, state law doesn't allow us to do that. So, I did have a conversation with Representative Hauks, and he was gonna talk to his colleagues and see if there was any interest in taking a little bit of that across the state.
There's no motion.
I move that bill be passed the second reading by title.
Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
This is an ordinance amending ordinance 5271 concerning the adopted fiscal year 17 annual budget for the community investment program. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager and the city clerk to execute a company-install water main extension agreement in the form attached hereto, with Missouri American Water Company for the Brady Commerce Park Water Main Extension Project in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, in support for the development of the performance agreement between the city and Dollar Creek, the city agreed to pay for building the waterline to that site. Staff's been working with Missouri American Water Company, they may develop the route, there is a print in your packet that shows where this waterline would be located at, the cost is not to exceed $165,000, $120,000. And, let's say, we've worked very well with Missouri American to get this accomplished, therefore, ready to get started as quickly as possible.
So, some of the water up the street is Holden water, correct? Isn't it on HH up that way? It's not Missouri American Water, or do they own well?
No, all the water-
Because I have 200-
-is just down Cahill.
Because the little house I have, I think the water's out of Holden or something.
The outlets are, yeah. Staff would ask, City Council, true, agree.
Move that said bill be passed the second reading by title.
Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
This is an ordinance authorizing the city manager and the city clerk to execute a company-install water main extension agreement in the form attached hereto, with Missouri American Water Company for the Brady Commerce Park Water Main Extension Project in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Other businesses. Request from the Christmas store for funding from the Stevenson Fund.
This is an annual request that this, from the Stevenson Fund. The Christmas store provides food for those in need around Christmas time. Last year, they were able to provide a holiday meal for 446 families, for a total of 1,149 individuals, and they would have requested $600 from the Stevenson Fund for the Christmas store. Do I have any questions?
It's the same number they've asked every year.
It is, yeah, so, one year, they, they had a lot more, they, they felt like they would have more of a need, but it's gone back down unfortunately. So, this is a move to approve, by the $600?
Move to approve.
Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Thanks.
Alright, anybody sign up for appearances of the council not listed on the agenda?
We gotta teach you how to do that, Mr. Mills, you are sitting right back.
Somebody took the list, alright. Alright. Alright, we got Miss Lane Madison, the mayor, and our city council, if you didn't have any, we didn't have any motions, if anybody has a council. We got Boy Scout Troop 513 is here.
Tim Mills.
So, Tim Mills. You wanna talk about it, you wanna, do you wanna throw it to one of the boys, let the boys tell us what they're here for?
I'll be there quicker. Just a requirement for an Eagle Scout, required merit badge, for the City Council meeting, so we'll be able to, then we have a Wednesday night class, we'll discuss what goes on, what they would-
Okay. Glad to see y'all here. City manager report?
Just a couple of things, number one, we did bid out the sewer main extension for Brady Commerce Park as well, but that did fall underneath the $100,000 threshold, it's per policy of City Council, it's within my authority to approve, not bring back for council action, but I did want to let you know that we did award that, and it did come in a little bit under budget than what we anticipated, so we're happy with that, but construction should begin on that soon. Also, design is almost done for Phase 2, and we have applied to MODOT for break-in access on Highway 13, and are waiting their response, but we'll be ready to bid that out as well, as well as Veterans Road, Phase 1 should be pretty close to being ready to bid out, so hopefully those will be bid simultaneously, and with both of them out there, maybe we'll get better bids on both of those, there'd be more work for the contractor. And then also, we approved today the agreement with KCP and Al to do the electric improvements on Phase 4 for downtown, so that's progressing also. I do not have anything further at this time.
Director of Finance report?
Well, we had our preliminary audit today, everything started, the process is starting very smoothly. They plan to come back the week of November 6, and they'll stay a full week and prepare the audit. Then, talking with Doug last week, the city is gonna need to go do an RFP for our audit services for next year, so I promised I'd have a change in February, something like that, to give whoever the time to look over things, and have enough time to get a plan of this, if we, in fact, choose to go. We ended the year about 8% down from last year's number in sales tax. We ended the year about 8% down from last year's number in sales tax, but only two, I mean, that was the month of September, I'm sorry, we were 8% down on last year's September at this time. But for the total year, we were down about 2% in sales tax, so it wasn't as bad as it first looked. And overall, tax revenue, we're only down 0.9%, so just under 1% of last year's numbers. Those could change because we need, we need to approve the money that's received in October and towards September. I need to approve it back into fiscal year 17, so they might change a little bit, but that's about where we're staying right now.
Anything more?
I have nothing to say.
Lynn?
I want to publicly thank the Master Gardeners that helped the city today by placing the plants around our entryway sign. They all joined in and some staff went out and worked with them. That project is completed, they've got the landscaping done, threw a rock, put in a random sign and, I'll take a look. Plants, if they're standard small this time. But we really, I want to publicly thank the Master Gardeners, they really put up on it.
Is that, is that road repairs going on over in Cahill or is that water worked or is that Myers is out there working on it?
In Cahill, I'm not too sure.
Not Cahill?
Okay.
Over, Cheatham Court.
Well, Cheatham Court, that roadway repair, had a roadway favor there that everyone gets back in, because of the road. Pretty bad spot there that really need to get repaired. We've been looking on, between burst fast and several projects, we've been hitting this and trying to get that project.
Yeah, my wife just was upset because she couldn't drive down Cheatham.
It's all good.
Alright, so. IT? Alright, this is Carol. HR?
Me either.
Alright, quiet. Donnie?
New trucks out there, public likes it. It's been toured about every time it stops.
Yeah.
Other than that.
I have an electric motorcycle pretty good to look at. It's parked inside, plugged into the wall back there. That's how it charges. We're going to be testing and evaluating it until the 16th and Officer Ronnie Kathy will be riding it in the homecoming parade Saturday. So we're going to be looking at some grant funding to try and buy two of them and hopefully we can come through with that. We've got some ideas about where to go to look. And if we do, then maybe we'll get something.
So how long does it last, plug in and unplug?
140 miles, just city driving. And it takes about nine hours to charge. It likes to be charged. The guy said anytime you get a chance, plug it in. It was down to 81% when I went home for dinner and an hour later, when I came back and unplugged it, it was back up to 100%. So, really, really cool bike. I rode around quite a bit today, got a lot of looks from people and it's completely silent. All you hear is the tires and the bell. So it's a really cool bike. It's all the package that, that's back there, has all the lights and the siren on it. It retails for about $21,000.
Just a good trip in Chicago and glad to be home. You too. Anything?
Nope. I don't have anything.
Anything, Sally?
I do.
Alright.
Want to remind you all to get your, signed up for your emails with the city.
Yes.
So I want to be sure you all have done that. And then also, did you all decide to go ahead and have the Paris Con the Control discussion in November at a study session?
I think that's.
Is that pretty much?
I'm working on that. Communication via email with them.
I answered one.
Okay, I saw it though while I was here. Okay, that's all.
I think that's, that's what we're talking about, the study session.
Okay, okay.
Alright, I don't have anything.
Should we, oh, hey, could we normally try to in November, December, have one meeting, you think?
We, we've tried to. If we don't have any business, if we have business, we'll go ahead and have that second one. We've tried to just have one.
Trying to get used to this.
Yeah, November and December.
I like these little tabs here.
Yeah.
It's okay, figure it out.
Alright.
Well, and I did that thinking that would help you because, I know, we need to get some more.
Alright, we have nothing else, then we don't have any reason to go into closed session, correct? Alright, so let's adjourn this meeting.
We still hear Mr. Mills name at our house as far as being a such studies teacher. The only thing that concerned me was when Colin came home and said that it was a rock and we were national and we were all like, we should edit it. Mr. Mills said so. It must be true.
Did he actually say that?
Yes. And Sheryl said so. Of course he didn't say so, but you know.
Yes, no, not at all.
He says it's bad, so.
I like such, I mean, that's been 20 years and it's been 20 years. Soon as I saw it, I'm like, yep, I like it. I know this one.
Yes, sir.
Just honor me on.
I think he was supposed to say it, Bill.
I, I read that today.